Go to a video question from a number of people with whom we spoke. And we feature in this segment, why take the vaccine?
Why should I take a vaccine and it can't help me from the disease? Why the reason? Why? Let me ask.
We have to take the vaccine. Even though if we do take the vaccine, we still end up catching COVID and still go to hospital.
Then so when I take the vaccine, people still are catching. People still are catch COVID when I take the vaccine and I pass it on. So where is sent?
So those are the video questions from the number of people you heard. And I'm going to throw to my guests online to help us with that answer. When you do send your messages, your tweets, please use the hashtag RG Town Hall. And send your questions to at Television Jam One. So that we can take as many of the questions as possible. Professor Winston Davidson, can I begin with you? You heard the questions that they have, why take the vaccine?
First of all, the reason why we take the vaccines and why we take vaccines in Jamaica are rooted in our historical experiences with vaccines. We have been able to eradicate all, let me repeat, all communicable diseases that are notifiable by the World Health Organization. I'm talking about polio, whooping cough, measles, mumps, rubella, et cetera. In so doing, we have been able to protect our children from debilitating diseases and complications. So our experience as Jamaicans since 1978, when we declared mandatory vaccinations for all children attending primary schools, we have seen the rate of malnutrition drop. Because what we were having is a situation where at the university hospital during that time, between 50 to 60% of all the children on the children's ward had mild, moderate or severe malnutrition. And when we look at their rate of vaccination, it was almost negligible. And they were getting a number of immunizable diseases every year. And their system just couldn't recover from it fast enough. Today, if you look on the wards and you look at our Jamaican children, by virtue of the fact that this has been eradicated, we have now one of the best, let me repeat, the best record in the world in terms of vaccination of our children and being freed from these diseases.
All right.
So we know from our experience. The second, okay.
Yeah, let me just, let me get another question in Prof. I've got that one. University student is asking, and Dr. Melody Ennis, you can take this. If the vaccine does not prevent one from contracting or transmitting COVID, nor is there any guarantee that it will prevent any one person from staying out of the hospital? Why should we take it?
So the vaccines were designed to prevent severe illness, hospitalization and death. That's what it was for each of us. Now, if you have heard the testimony of persons who have had COVID, then they will say that the symptoms, the shortness of breath, the inability to smell, debilitating illness that they have. They would certainly want something to prevent them from having this illness. But apart from being able to take care of self when you're vaccinated, it is also important in order to help the rest of us. Because the virus is allowed to spread from person to person. What happens is that it replicates at a faster rate and more in persons unvaccinated. And when it's happening, we tend to get variants being formed. The variants that have now have just increased infecting. So you know, it's easier, more contagious. But if continue along this rate, the changes may be that the virus is more virulent, causes more severe illness, or maybe even won't be affected by a vaccine. So when we take vaccines, we do it ourselves, yes, but we certainly do it for the greater good. There is also
Yeah, go ahead, finish.
In the population, in the population that cannot take vaccines at all. And we need to protect them. We need to form that shield around them. And that can only happen when we get to herd immunity.
Let me hear from Dr. Johann White, immunologist and vaccine researcher. What is in the vaccine? Dr. White?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. It's really heartbreaking to hear a story such as shared earlier from the Knight family. And we've had to call some families who have lost love. But it's really painful to be able to have to do that. Now, just remind people what a vaccine is. A vaccine uses a part of a germ or a harmless form of a germ introduced into your body. Because your body has to see something that looks like the germ. You're training your body to recognize the germ and to be able to put up a fight the next time you come in contact with that germ. That's what a vaccine is. So you have to put something in the vaccine that looks like the germ. And as such, you either use an inactivated part of the germ, form of the germ, or you use a little piece of it that looks like the germ. So most of the vaccines that are approved introduce some form of mRNA. It's a genetic material that comes from the virus. Or it can be made in a laboratory to look like the virus. So you have to make something that looks like the virus in order to train the body to recognize the virus and put up a fight. An mRNA vaccine basically is a little genetic piece of material that looks like a part of the virus. It trains your body to recognize that part of the virus and to be able to put up a fight the next time you see it. That's a simple way I'd put it.
Well, listeners, viewers, you can send your questions using the hashtag RG Town Hall. Send them to at Television Jam One. So we can take as many of those as possible also. Or text line 876 381 0072. We have a question from Leisha. And Leisha is asking Prof. If you caught COVID-19, do you have to take the vaccine? If yes, why? And are the antibodies already in the body from the time you caught the virus? Professor Davidson, can you take that one for me, please?
First of all, if you caught COVID-19 and you have recovered from COVID-19, then you have built up some antibodies in the body that will be able to give you protection. But this protection is only partial. With a vaccine, you are able to get an even higher level of antibodies to protect you from getting the disease. And so therefore, even though somebody may have had a positive COVID test in the past and they have recovered from it, it does in fact them very, do them very good if they wish, if they wish to protect themselves. No vaccine gives 100% protection. The majority of vaccines that are on the market are over 65 to maybe 95% protection. And so therefore, what we need to understand is that even though it is not full proof, it will give you protection. While at the same time, if you get an infection, in other words, you are in the 10% or 8% that are at risk and get an infection. That infection will not be as severe had you not been able to take the vaccine before.
Let me hear this answer from Dr. Melody Ennis. Marvin has what could be considered a follow-up question. Why is this vaccine so different from the others in the past? Others prevent the disease or make it less likely to get it. This does not do so. Why is there such an urgency when nothing is certain? Dr. Ennis?
So vaccines in general prevent us from getting severely ill, prevents us from being hospitalized and dying. The vaccines we have had in the past do just that. If we consider the bell curve, there are some persons that will get the disease. If you think of polio, for example, we do the polio drops. And because persons may still get polio over time, we have changed the formulation of the polio drops as we advance with science. Because persons do and can still get the disease. You can get the chickenpox vaccine and persons do get the disease. The severity of the illness is much less and they get better much faster. Therefore, the vaccines do exactly what they say they ought to do. Now you look at the difference between the vaccines. As we have progressed over the last 200 years using vaccines, we have seen different platforms that have been used to make the vaccines. So we had the weakened versions of the vaccine. We have had the killed versions. We have had toxins. We now are at the viral vector technology, messenger RNA. So we are looking at various ways to make vaccines, to make them faster, to make them safer. But the bottom line is that they are protecting us from severe illness. And if we do get the illness, it is much shorter in duration.
I'm going to go to a break. This is RGR Gleaner Virtual Town Hall. We are putting your questions to the panel of experts we have here. We finish at 10:30. We take an hour and a half this evening to answer all of those questions. So please send them in to 381 0072. Use the hashtag RG Town Hall. Send your questions to at Television Jam One. Stay with us, we're up on a break. COVID-19 and Davidson Davidson, Researcher Dr. Johann White and Director of Family Health Services in the Ministry of Health, Dr. Melody Ennis. In this segment, we want to focus a little bit on comorbidities and vaccination. So a number of people have asked about these comorbidities, the underlying issues. Even though we say that people should take the vaccine if they have underlying issues, some people have specific questions about what they have and they're asking for guidance. Here is a video question from some people with whom we spoke.
We were told that we would only need one shot or, well, two shots, one and a and now we are being told that we need a booster. Maybe it will eventually be one every year. So it seems like it still needs some research.
The booster would be, would be
How would the vaccine affect my asthma?
If somebody trouble with sinus, I mean, still can't give a change.
So we had some questions there specifically about sinus and asthma. And we have some other ones. We want to thank you for the questions you are sending in to 876 381 0072. When you do send the question, just give us your name. So we can know, we can know whose questions we're putting to the guests online. Dr. White, can I ask you? I have underlying issues. I have astmas, I have asthma and sinus. Is it safe for me to take the vaccine? That's what a lot of people are asking. Dr. Johann White, can you hear me? I'm not hearing Dr. White. And I ask you to bear with us because they are joining us, as you can see by Zoom. And sometimes there are connectivity issues. So he's a bit frozen at the moment. Professor Davidson, can you hear me? Dr. White, you can hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Right. I just want to ask you about the sinus and the asthma. People are wondering if they have those. Is it safe for them to take the vaccine?
Well, I could answer that. I mean, sinusitis is a common condition. It's an inflammation of the sinuses, which is a space behind your, your face, the skin in your face. It can be as a result of the common cold or just allergies. And there's no contraindication or there's no, nothing to prevent you from getting a vaccine. The vaccine is still safe in somebody who is having a sinusitis or flare above their sinuses. For somebody with asthma, they are at risk for severe outcomes if they do get COVID-19, the disease that results from the virus. And as such, they do benefit from vaccination. They're at risk for poor outcomes. And as such, they're one of the more important groups to be vaccinated again. So it is safe for use in persons with sinusitis and persons with asthma.
So Marlon was asking Professor Davidson, can persons with autoimmune diseases or immunocompromised people take the vaccine? Explain what an autoimmune disease is or immunocompromised people? And say whether they can take the vaccine for Marlon and Professor Davidson.
First of all, a person with an autoimmune disease means that the cells which ought to protect them from the disease somehow starts to attack the person's normal human cells. And so therefore, what happens is that it weakens their system and renders them vulnerable to diseases. In other words, because they do not necessarily have the capacity to protect themselves from a particular disease because the immune system is compromised. That is what we refer to as an autoimmune disease. In such cases, there are other methods of assisting this person to get, gain the immunity by different techniques depending on the case that presents itself. In persons who now have diseases like cancer, diseases that in fact debilitate your capacity to respond to an infection or respond to some injurious agent coming into the body. Such patients also are immunocompromised. They do not necessarily have an autoimmune disease where their cells start to eat their own cells, so to speak, or attack their own cells. In both cases, it may be possible to have these persons being subject to protective techniques. And in some mild cases, you may also use some techniques that produce that, that you have to ensure that the immunization which they may have can elaborate the so-called antibodies. So that it, of course, gives them the capacity to respond to the disease. But these have to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. And the clinical presentation of this, of this person is very important. And you can't make a carte blanche statement that you can give them the immunization, et cetera. You have to evaluate them clinically and, and deal with their concerns on a case-by-case basis.
I have a question from Nikki. Before I put that question to you, Dr. Ennis, that evaluation that Prof says has to be done on a case-by-case basis. Where exactly would this evaluation be done? Is this at the site when you go for testing for, for the vaccine? Or is it your healthcare, your regular doctor who is supposed to do that assessment? Dr. Ennis?
Again, it depends on your condition at the time. If you have an autoimmune condition and you are stable on your medication, you are well, then there is no indication at this time. If you, for example, on what we call immunosuppressive therapy, intravenous therapy, immunosuppressive therapy, you may need to have a consultation with your physician in conjunction with us at the Ministry of Health and Wellness, of course, to see the timing. There is a recommendation that you may need to wait 14 days on either side of receiving these vaccines if you're on such a but again, it's rarely case by case. And we dialogue with our colleagues at the various stages. So we offer best option to our patients.
So Nikki also wants to know, Dr. Ennis, I'll stay with you. I am transverse, a transverse my light is patient. Walk with a walker. I use a wheelchair for distance. I'm on steroid, prednisone. And that induces diabetes and high blood pressure. I'm also on insulins. And there's another medication there that I think I massacred the name. I live alone. Is it safe for me to take the vaccine?
It's again, you have listed quite a bit of things that you have. I really would need to know the medication you're on and the state in which you are at this time. Now, in general, you have a neurological challenge. And of course, your medication has predisposed you to diabetes. And we know that that combination that you have described, you're definitely immunocompromised. It means that your response under normal circumstances is going to be a little less than if you didn't have those conditions. And we look at the risks and the benefits of the vaccines here. We know that if you are immunocompromised as opposed to being immunocompetent, then when you get COVID, your condition is going to be worse, the outcome possibly negative. We look then at your state. If you are on medication and you're doing relatively well, then we may want to offer the vaccine to you, of course, under controlled circumstances and to follow you over time as we, to, to ensure that you are maintaining your stability.
Dr. Johann White Wayne is asking, if you have chronic, I think this is urticaria, it may be hives, is it safe to take the vaccine? And which of the three available COVID-19 vaccines would you recommend for people with this chronic urticaria? Is that the proper pronunciation for it, hives?
Urticaria.
Urticaria.
Right. That's an interesting question. Again, there is no real contraindication. There is nothing to say that the vaccine will be harmful in somebody who has chronic urticaria. If the person is on some medications that can depress the immune system, your concern is that when you give the vaccine, their immune system is not able to respond to the vaccine in the way that somebody else would who is not on a medication that is weakening their immune system. So if the, if the person is not on treatment or not on some steroid or other medication that suppresses the immune system, then they should be fine. Also, persons who are taking a medication that may suppress the immune system, as Dr. Ennis was saying earlier, you want to make sure that they're on the lowest dose that keeps them controlled and well. So if they're in a flare and they have to be on a high dose of medications, they're not really stable enough. You don't know where their immune system is. You want to have them at a state where they're stable and doing well before you can administer the vaccine to ensure that they have a good response. In a person like that with chronic urticaria, you just monitor them. If they do get some itching that is triggered after getting the vaccine, there's some symptomatic treatment that you can give. So you know, antihistamines can be helpful and you monitor that individual closely.
Any of the three vaccines you would recommend as first preference?
There, from my knowledge, there's no difference in terms of the rates of any itching from these different vaccines. And they're all, you know, similar technology and relatively safe. So there's no advantage of one over the other, except with the JNG. It's a single dose vaccine. So that will decrease the exposure. So perhaps just a one-shot vaccine would be preferable. But in general, they would all have the same or relatively good coverage or efficacy in an individual.
We learned only yesterday as well that JNG, they're now saying a booster shot is going to be needed for that. So I think people should be gearing up for a couple of shots of whatever it is we're taking.
At some point, yes.
At some point. Now, Professor Davidson, Mrs. Campbell wants to know. She's scheduled for a C-section delivery in mid-September. Any long-term effects on my unborn child if I take the vaccine while pregnant?
The evidence today would suggest that in fact, if a mother has a normal pregnancy with no other immunocompromised situations, so that she would have to go through further case evaluation. It is quite safe for every pregnant mother to take the vaccine. What are the advantages? The first advantage is that when the mother takes the vaccine, what happens is that the mother builds up the antibodies in order to attack the virus, to attack the organism that is there to harm her. Now, these antibodies can cross a membrane known as the placenta barrier, the placenta membrane into the cavity where the child is and circulate there and protect the child. So by the time the child is born, the child has what is called maternal antibodies, which protects her up to not only months, but even a year or more.
And there's not likely, not likely to be any effect, no negative effect on the child having received these antibodies.
It is more beneficial, beneficial to the child rather than harmful to the child.
Dr. Ennis, Shivani wants to know, is there a vaccine for breastfeeding, breastfeeding mothers?
So all the vaccines can be given to persons who are breastfeeding. Now, we know from the technology of the make of the vaccines that they do not cross over into the breast milk or in the placenta, as Prof mentioned. So the baby is safe from any harm because there is no harm to be had from the vaccine. Also, if mommy is vaccinated, antibodies do get across into the breast milk and continue to protect the baby. So baby will be getting a double whammy of protection from being in the fetus as a fetus, when it crosses over the placenta and mommy is breastfeeding and baby is protected again for period after birth.
All right, stay with us. We continue to take your questions on this RGR Gleaner Virtual Town Hall. Send your questions with the hashtag RG Town Hall. Send them as well to at Television Jam One. You can send them to at Emily M Shields. And you can send your text messages at 381, make that WhatsApp, 381 0072. Send a name when you do send the messages. And we're up on a break. More when we come back.
I have had my two injections. And those who refuse and invent all kinds of reasons for not taking the vaccine, they are exposing themselves to what they will not like later on. And also others in jeopardy. They should take the vaccine.
Protect others from getting sick. Avoid close contact when you are experiencing cough and fever. Avoid spitting in public. If you have a fever, cough and difficulty breathing, seek medical care early and share previous travel history with your healthcare provider.
Thank you so much for rejoining us for the RGR Gleaner Virtual Town Hall meeting. We're focusing on COVID-19 and vaccines. You have a lot of questions, some of them you've had answered before, but we're going to try and put as many of them as possible because we know that the answers are important to you when you get to hear your question asked. Thank you so much for rejoining us, Professor Winston Davidson, Dr. Johann White and Dr. Melody Ennis. In this segment of the program, we're going to focus on booster shots because that has come up as a point of concern for our viewers and listeners all across the various platforms. because that has come up as a point of concern for our viewers and listeners all across the various platforms. So you may have heard part of this before, but we're going to give you the full part of this video question from some of the people with whom we spoke.
We were told that we would only need one shot or, well, two shots, one and a and now we are being told that we need a booster. Maybe it will eventually be one every year. So it seemed like it still needs some research.
The booster would be added to the vaccine.
So, point and question there, Dr. White. As you mentioned, you know, like the Johnson and Johnson, people said it was a one dose. And then only in the last forty-eight hours or so, we heard a booster shot is going to be needed. Some of us have taken AstraZeneca, Moderna or now Pfizer. And we are being told that the efficacy wanes after perhaps six months or booster shot is going to be needed. Tanil is asking, how long does the protection from the COVID-19 vaccines last?
Right, that's a very important question. Now, do recall that there are a couple of ways of talking about efficacy or effectiveness of these vaccines. One is the amount of antibodies they elicit. Antibodies is what your body produces to fight off germs. And the vaccine is supposed to trigger your body to produce those antibodies. When those go up, they last for a certain period of time and then they go down and they're supposed to stay there for a while. But there are other aspects of your immune system other than antibodies that are also protecting you from the virus. There are things that your immune cells are doing. But it's not easy to measure what these immune cells are doing. It's easier to measure what antibodies are doing. So my point is antibodies are not the be all and end all in terms of the protection that you get from vaccines. So what we are saying about antibodies being protective and for how long, we're seeing in studies that maybe after six months, eight months, it starts to wane, right? So that's one way of thinking about protection. The other is the protection that you get from ending up in hospital, the protection from severe disease, hospitalization, severe COVID-19 and deaths. So we're still observing and looking at how patients or individuals are doing after vaccination. And we know that the durability of the protection is still there for months or perhaps approaching a year. But, you know, we've not, it's not been two years since we vaccinated somebody, is it? So we don't have a conclusive answer on that in terms of how long the protection is there. However, there are indications that like other viruses like the flu, that the novel coronavirus, not so novel anymore, will become what we call endemic. So it'll be ever-present with us and as such, there'll be more infections, there'll be infections in the future. However, when people are protected, if you have mass vaccination and people are protected, if somebody does get COVID in the future, hospitals will not be overrun and your healthcare workers and your health facility will be better able to manage that condition and treat you. In addition to that, however, it may require, just like the flu, you may require some top-up of your immune system. We don't yet know if it will be every two years, every year. In some parts of the world, like Israel and the US, they're observing from their vaccination records and observations that after six months or eight months, it starts to wane, especially in persons over sixty years old. And they have started to give vaccinations. The US has approved, for example, the Pfizer vaccine as a booster, approved the booster for certain individuals initially and then for all individuals. And the last thing that I'd like to say about boosters is that there are some people for sure that we know will definitely need boosters. And those are persons with weakened immune systems because in the initial two doses that they got from a two-dose series or a dose of J and J, they would not have mounted a strong enough immune response or protection compared to somebody who does not have a weakened immune system. And so for them, we know for sure that within about twenty-eight days, they will need a booster dose to make sure that they have the right response. For everybody else, at some point in the future, it's looking like eight months, it's looking like one year, they may, they may actually do require a booster shot.
Dr. Melody Ennis is asking, how effective are the vaccines against the Delta variant?
So the change that occurred with the Delta variant was really to affect infectious this virus is. It makes it more contagious. Now, the vaccines were designed and directed at the prevention of severe illness, hospitalization and death. And it has been shown that although there is this change of the virus being more contagious, it is not altering tremendous the severity of the illness. And as such, the evidence is still saying that you get protection from taking these vaccines against the Delta variant.
But which type is the strongest to deal with the Delta variant? Shaun is asking that as a follow-up, Dr. Ennis.
So there is no better one. What we look at is the effectiveness of the vaccines. And all of the vaccines approved by the WHO at this time offer up to a hundred percent effectiveness at what they are supposed to do, preventing hospitalization, severe illness and death. So when you speak to effectiveness, then all the vaccines are a plus. The case that all persons tend to look at is the business of efficacy, which just looks at your chance of not getting the disease. But even if you do get the disease, remember the severity is going to be much less.
Okay. But which, which vaccine gives you the greater chance of not getting the disease?
Pfizer is at ninety-five percent, Johnson and Johnson is at about ninety-three point one percent and AstraZeneca is about ninety percent at this time, when it is given eight to twelve weeks apart.
Okay, before I come to the video question, let me follow up with something from Sheena for Professor Davidson. What if I want to take the vaccine, but the brand I want, especially in light of what Dr. Ennis just said, the brand I want is not available at the center? I go to Professor Davidson. Should I wait and go back when that brand is available?
Look, let me, let me try and give a true perspective to the patients, the persons who are listening here. Every vaccine that has been passed to be used to prevent a particular disease has gone through a number of stages of scientific tests and what we call rigor. As a matter of fact, the World Health Organization has three stages. Now, the majority of vaccines are evaluated not only in six months or a year, but sometimes over a five-year period. And in order to really understand the true effectiveness of a vaccine, you have to look at this vaccine as to how it gives the coverage to the patient over a much longer period than two years. At this particular point, you may see that a particular vaccine has a higher percentage of reduction of risks to have the disease. Because what we are talking about when we say that a vaccine has ninety-two percent or ninety-five percent, what we are measuring is the risk of preventing the disease from happening is ninety-two percent or ninety-five percent, as the case may be. However, you know that after you take one dose, what happens is that the number of antibodies that you produce, even though it rises over time, will decrease. So what you do is that you give another dose so that it enhances and even make the rise even further. And you may even have to do three doses depending on the circumstances and the conditions. And so we are not yet at the stage where we can say with scientific certainty that in fact, this particular vaccine is better than this one or better than that one. Therefore, whatever all the vaccines now are efficacious. And if you get the chance to get a vaccine, don't wait for that one that you don't have. A bird in the hand is always better than a thousand in the bush.
Well, they normally say two, but we will take a thousand. Let me go to another video question from one of the, a couple of the people with whom we spoke. This is on the Pfizer vaccine.
As a mom, I was in the first set of blitz scenarios and there was a query with my second dose about whether or not I would actually get it. And it was all sorts of up and down and try one place today, try another place. I am hoping, and my question is this, will there be adequate Pfizer vaccines for a second dose?
This is for you, Dr. Melody Ennis. A lot of people are asking for Pfizer. You're prioritizing children twelve years and older who are in school. Will there be enough Pfizer vaccines for a second dose for adults?
Yes, I believe we will have adequate doses of Pfizer for the target population. And as we get more vaccines in country, we will certainly be able to expand that target. So we just got the first of three tranches as a gift from the United States. So what we have not, we'll be able to utilize. And all persons who receive their first dose from this tranche will certainly have their second dose in three weeks and we will continue to get vaccines, Pfizer in particular, to cover for second doses.
So you've got about two hundred and eight thousand a couple of days ago. And the other tranche you expect from the US, is that also Pfizer?
It is Pfizer, yes. So we have two more tranches of, two more tranches of Pfizer to get of about this.
About the same, okay. Right, and then Anne Marie, Anne Marie wants to know, perhaps this is for you, Dr. Ennis, again. I want to know for those who have appointments for their second dose of the AstraZeneca, if AstraZeneca vaccines are available at the vaccination sites?
Yes, AstraZeneca is available at the vaccination sites. We are offering AstraZeneca at fixed sites. You will be hearing the schedule of all the sites across the island. We do give you them on a week-by-week basis. But now that we're rolling out full speed and standardizing, we will those sites for you in short order. Just for an example, we have the Good Samaritan in here in Kingston, St. Joseph Hospital, University Hospital. Those are standard sites, fixed sites. And we will have AstraZeneca being offered at those facilities.
All right, just before I come up on the next break and in the next segment, we're going to be dealing with vaccine side effects and compensation. A lot of people had questions on those matters, but I want to ask, Dr. White, this question that somebody wanted to ask for the first segment. Is it advisable to take the vaccine, this is Alicia's question, without being knowledgeable as to whether or not one is COVID-positive? Dr. White, can you take that one for me?
Right, there is a logistics challenge in terms of trying to test everybody as they present themselves for vaccination. And so some persons will have asymptomatic unrecognized infection and that has been happening. We are not aware in the literature of any more serious adverse effects in those persons. In fact, what we have tended to observe is the opposite in that you tend to get a better boosted response if you have had natural infection and then get vaccinated. So so far from the observations, there isn't any clear increased risk of harm from being immunized if you have asymptomatic infection. But of course, this is an unfolding story. We still have to collect safety data and observe our patients and have our systems to note adverse events and to follow patients and vaccines in a timely manner.
All right, so please send your questions with the hashtag RG Town Hall at Television Jam One and send your messages to 3810072, that's eight seven six three eight one zero zero seven two. Send a name as well. I know a lot of questions are coming in and we're trying to condense them. In the meantime, Dr. Ennis Blondi on Twitter is asking if one got the first shot of Pfizer on about Saturday and three days after the person tested positive, Dr. Ennis, for COVID, would they need to start the process over and get the two shots?
Absolutely not. So you are going to take the very best care of yourself now that you have tested positive for COVID. You are going to, I hope you have invested in a pulse oximeter to watch your oxygen saturation. We don't want it to go down below ninety-five. You must continue to do your deep breathing exercises, steam inhalation is good and you're analgesic. So you ensure that you're not having a fever or cough, you take good care of yourself. And once you are better, some persons will get better in two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, it all depends. But once you are better asymptomatic, then you can get your second dose of the vaccine.
And Professor Davidson, Alicia wants to know, is there testing for hypertension done on the site prior to being vaxxed?
Well, the fact is that there is a form that you fill out before you are given a vaccination. And that form sometimes asks whether you have diabetes or you have hypertension, you have other diseases. It is necessary to fill out that form. It is not necessarily routine in certain instances, especially that we have been practicing over the past forty, fifty years, you know, take the blood pressure of a child who is, who is getting a vaccination or even an adult. But it ought to be routine, bearing in mind the fact that at present, we do have a pandemic of non-communicable disease of which hypertension, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, et cetera. So in the event that you put on that document that you have in fact diabetes or hypertension, I think that you ought to be given some special situation to do the necessary tests for hypertension and diabetes. And it's, it's, it's almost, it's a chronic obstructive arrhythmia disease. It's almost, you know, something that ought to be routine. That is a standard that I would in fact recommend as a public.
All right, thank you for that, Prof. We're up on a break. When we come back, we're going to be looking at vaccine side effects. A number of people are worried about these potential side effects and some have questions on compensation. So we'll take some more of your questions, send them in and use the hashtag RG Town Hall. Send them to at Television Jam One. Send them as well to 3810072 and send a name. We're up on a break. More when we come back.
Should I avoid shaking hands because of the new coronavirus? Yes, respiratory viruses can be passed by shaking hands and touching your eyes, nose and mouth. Greet people with a wave, a nod or a bow instead.
The e-Gleaner meets your needs for fast and easy comprehensive coverage as we keep you in the know, even while on the go. Click Download and take your stories with you. Create collections and read later. Current affairs and past issues anywhere and anytime with the e-Gleaner. Share in the e-Gleaner experience when you sign up for Gleaner Premium. Learn more at jamaica-gleaner.com/premium.
The Time by Tetley is.
Vaccination from my days in primary school. I have been receiving vaccination. So I don't see the difference between this one now and the one that I took then. So for us to be able to counteract this disease, we need to vaccinate.
Thank you so much for rejoining us. It's the second to last segment in this RG Town Hall. That is the hashtag RG Town Hall at Television Jam One. And we're getting your questions. We're going to focus in this segment now on questions you have about vaccine side effects. A number of people have asked about it. And some people have concerns about compensation. We still have Professor Winston Davidson, Dr. Johan White and Dr. Melody Ennis, who are the specialists we have answering your questions. Here's a video question on side effects from the vaccine.
When you take the vaccine, what do you do to your family? Your whole people are talking about saying the vaccine kill you and you're completely impaired and something like, you know. How is care when you take it? What do you do to your body?
What will happen to us after the vaccine?
Dr. Ennis, vaccine kill you, vaccine cripple you? That's what they're saying. Do we have any evidence of that so far in Jamaica?
There is no evidence, I believe, not only in Jamaica, but across the world, that vaccines cripple you or kill you. Now, there are side effects that we get with vaccines, as with other medications. We have those that are very, very common and more than one in ten persons will get these. So you will have tenderness, pain at the injection site. You will feel unwell. Persons tell you that they are so tired, restless after taking the vaccine. They may get chills, they get a headache, joint pain, muscle pain. We expect that more than one in ten persons. A little less, one in ten, you may get a lump at the injection site, you may get a fever, you may get vomiting, the runny nose, the sore throat. All of that may happen. The less common, persons do get dizzy. The dizziness is usually transient, almost immediately after getting the vaccine. And you are allowed to sit, you may be allowed to lie down, depending on how long it lasts. Persons may have decreased appetite for a couple of days. They may get abdominal pain. Persons may get lymph nodes, which we call Sankan all over the body. You may get a bit of sweating, some itching. All of these things usually happen within six to twenty-four hours of getting the vaccine and may last up to seventy-two hours. We expect these and we advise you, you take your analgesic, something like Panadol, you get lots of fluid and you get some rest. Now, those are the common side effects. There are other side effects that are very rare, that we only see if millions of persons have received the vaccines or other medications. And we have seen a few of those rare cases. So
Like what?
We have noted with AstraZeneca, so we have noted with AstraZeneca, the business of blood clots. There are different types and locations where persons may get a clot, but that has been noted. And it is plausible that person may. We also look at the statistics of getting a blood clot. And with AstraZeneca, it is about one person in every 250,000 persons that actually take the vaccine that may get a clot. There is no evidence at this time that you've had a clot before and you take the vaccine, you are more predisposed to getting another one. That evidence is not there. So there is still no contraindication if you have had a clot before. But just for a little bit of balance, there are other things that causes clots. For example, the oral contraceptive pill that ladies take from eighteen to forty-five. There is a one in 2,500 chance of you getting a clot. If you are a lady, you know that you're over thirty-five and you're obese and you smoke, your doctor will tell you, stay away from the pill because you know that your chance of getting a clot is high. So yes, it can happen. We know how to treat. We ask you to look for certain symptoms. This is a time if you develop that pain in the calf, that chest pain, that shortness of breath, you're not going to stay home and watch it, you're going to make contact. With AstraZeneca, with Johnson and Johnson, they have noted something called Guillain-Barre syndrome. It's usually caused by a virus, COVID, that may cause this illness where there is weakness and you may get paralysis. Of course, the most important thing that gets paralyzed would be your respiratory muscle and you may need to go on a ventilator. Again, we saw that 200 persons out of 12,800 persons got this Guillain-Barre that were treated. We didn't have any deaths reported. Now, with Pfizer or with the messenger RNA vaccines, which would be Pfizer and Moderna, what is very rare is myocarditis and pericarditis, which is inflammation of the heart muscle and inflammation of the tissue around the heart. It is seen maybe in adolescents, males, thirty years and younger. Again, it is very rare. Of the number of persons, I think it was two billion persons who would have received the Pfizer vaccine in that number. There was 1,148 cases that were probable and they confirmed 674. This condition, in most cases, usually resolve with bedrest. These 674 that were confirmed have had good outcomes. But of course, it is something for us to note. I want to say also that COVID is a culprit in a lot of these cases because you can also get myocarditis, pericarditis from the disease. And we have noted, in our country, that in a few of the cases that we have admitted of children in our hospitals, we have found pericarditis, myocarditis, and we have been to successfully treat these patients.
Okay. We have a number of questions. Let me come to Dr. White. After one shot of the AstraZeneca, my immune system overreacted. I was very, very, very sick. I tested negative for COVID, though I showed those symptoms after the vaccine, especially the lethargy. I have no comorbidities. I'm afraid to take the second shot. Should I? Thanks, Angela. Dr. White, what do you say to Angela?
That's an excellent question. When I got the first dose of AstraZeneca vaccine, I was sick. Meaning I was just groggy. I wanted to sleep the whole day. And I had pain in my arm. And if I tried to turn, this arm would be really, really painful. And then I had a severe headache. And normally for me, I'm used to headaches. It would go like after twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours the most. And I was trying to avoid Panadol. And I, after about day three, day four, I had to take it. And I was really groggy. So I was really sick after my first shot. But surprisingly, after my second dose, I didn't have that sort of a reaction. I was back to my normal self within a few hours. So most people will tell you that if they do have side effects after the first dose, it tends to be more severe. And after your second dose, somehow your body has acclimatized and you do fine. But monitor those side effects, make a note of them. If they get really serious, where they're not going away within like seventy-two hours despite taking Panadol every four to six hours, then you call your physician and you discuss that with them and get some guidance about what to do after that.
Okay. Prof. If someone, Marlon wants to know if someone, after taking the vaccine, develops a negative reaction to it resulting in serious health complications or death, who will be held responsible?
Well, the only, if in fact it can be proven that the negative side effects were in fact the result of the vaccine, then it needs to be investigated. And once it is proven that this is so, you need to resolve that in a court of law. Because from my experience, I have seen many, many cases. For example, let us look at this particular case. There is a young lady who went and in fact got her vaccine. And as soon as she got it, within a few moments, her heart started beating very fast. And she felt dizzy, et cetera. Almost, and her became almost cold and clammy. When she said, when she was examined, et cetera, settled down, they found that she had a panic attack, an anxiety attack. Now, that is why it is always necessary that this particular situation goes through the proper medical legal processes to determine cause-effect relationship. Not every instance that you have a side effect will mean that the side effect is caused by the vaccine or some other factor. It cannot be speculated if you're going to be of being responsible for the side effect.
Dr. Ennis, did I not hear some earlier report that governments have really said, based on the arrangements that there are with the various companies and so forth, who have literally put up some sort of immunity from prosecution? That's the basis on which they would manufacture the vaccines that governments all over the world would be the persons to be named as defendants if a lawsuit were to come?
That is indeed so. So the business of indemnification is not new with vaccine manufacturers that have actually been in place since the eighties. And most companies in the US are indemnified. And it is the government that basically stands, or they defer that risk to the government. The thought behind that is that manufacturing companies will focus on their core business, which is that of the science of making medicines. Now, they do not want to be bogged down with legalese and they therefore defer that risk to government. Now, persons need not be in fear. If you take the vaccine and you do have an untoward effect, we do have a team of experts, both locally and internationally, if necessary, to determine causality. And if we determine causality, compensation is not really going to make you better. But it will also help in the sense that you will, we will know the occurrence and we will be able to use our surveillance system to possibly withdraw, to suggest that we make a change. The point is that we have this robust system and persons can get compensation. Over time and over the years though, we have found that we have not had any of those cases where we identify that there is a cause and effect. In a few cases, yes, but the vast majority, not at all.
Okay, Dr. White, Carleen says, I hear, sorry, I think I lost that one. Marcia says the vaccines are affecting the menstrual cycles of some women. And this is currently being studied. How do we know it will not affect the reproductive system in the long term? Firstly, address it. Is it affecting the menstrual cycle of women?
Right. So I'm not aware of any increased risk of menstrual abnormalities, but I will definitely be looking back into that. But what we've seen from, in terms of guidances from agencies such as the Centers for Disease Control and other public health agencies, there is no detrimental effect on the female reproductive system or ability to have children in the future. Of course, this is subject to being observed over time. We've not yet reached two years, three years, maybe three years down the line. If we do pick up something, then as Dr. Ennis alluded to earlier, surveillance system will have to kick in and we'll have to make changes if we pick up a safety signal like that. So there are robust systems in place to pick up those safety signals or those incidents. But to date, I'm not aware of any such impact on fertility or reproductive health.
What about reproductive health for men? Any impact reported?
Similarly, what I would be concerned about, you know, the side effects that persons are concerned about in terms of vaccines are valid and are important. And there are monitoring systems in place to pick those up. But do recognize that, for example, let's say a clot. There may be a certain percentage that may be observed if people are being vaccinated. But do know that COVID nineteen does cause clots. It causes abnormalities with the clotting of your blood. And it may be ten times, tenfold higher risk in terms of persons who get COVID versus those who don't get COVID nineteen. And in terms of persons who are vaccinated, the number is much, much lower. So what is the risk that you want to deal with? The risk from COVID nineteen is definitely higher than with vaccination.
Right. Prof. Karine says, I'm fifty-one years old. I have fibroids. I have sickle cell trait. And I have to take iron supplements because my blood count is always low. I want to take the vaccine, but I'm so afraid of the problems I have. What do you say to Karine, Prof?
I would say to Karine, if she has fibroids and she has sickle cell trait, it is not a contraindication to take your vaccine. As a matter of fact, I would recommend her to have her vaccine. The system that is protected, that is elaborated has to do with your capacity to build antibodies against the virus. And what happens is that persons who are pre-morbid situation or other conditions, comorbid situations do have a higher rate, not only rate of infection, but also death rate. And so therefore, it is important for persons with a chronic disease to ensure that they get vaccinated in order to protect themselves from actually getting the disease. Because if you have a vaccination coverage, if you're diabetic or hypertensive or whatever, if you have vaccination coverage and it me and you are exposed to the virus and you happen to get the virus for whatever reason, you will not have the severe disease that you would have had if you didn't have the vaccine. So I would recommend you to get the vaccine.
All right, we're up on a break. Final segment coming up. I'll have a blitz segment for the last segment. We have a lot of myths, lots of things to get our experts giving us some answers on. So we'll take those after this. Stay with us, please. Thank you. We're back with you for the final segment of the virtual town hall on COVID nineteen and vaccines. We're rejoining Professor Winston Davidson, Dr. Johan White and Dr. Melody Ennis. A number of questions to get through in this segment. So I'm going to ask you to be very crisp in the answers that you give. Prof, who is not to take the vaccine?
A person who has already had his three doses or his two doses.
Another group of people who, any condition that would preclude one taking it?
Some of the immunocompromised persons who have been evaluated and found that it may not necessarily be the wise thing. They have other means of ensuring that they are protected. And of course, persons who may find themselves in a situation where they have, they are in a serious debilitating condition because of a disease. Well, of course, you know, you know that the different age cohorts where the vaccines do not apply, especially those below the age of eighteen, right? They should not take the vaccine.
Or below twelve at the moment.
Well, below twelve, yes. But when we look at, when we look Well, below 12, yes, but when we look at, when we look at, at the vaccines that we have, I'm looking in the Jamaican situation, that, you know, the vaccine that we have at present, only the Pfizer vaccine will be given in that particular age cohort. And so therefore, you can't, you wouldn't give the AstraZeneca to that particular age cohort. And so therefore, these are, these are stipulated by the vaccination, by the vaccine itself.
Dr. Ennis, can the virus mutate in a vaccinated person?
The virus can mutate in a vaccinated person, but that is not likely. The chance of that is very small. What happens when you are vaccinated is that the virus, as we would say in Jamaica, it don't take root. So it really gets into the body and it replicates. When you are vaccinated, that level of replication is much less. And it is that amount of change that usually lends itself to development of variants. So it can happen, but it is not likely. Usually if you are vaccinated, the virus tends to remain in your upper respiratory tract and therefore, that is why you don't get the severity of the symptoms. And in that phase, the reproduction is not as much. So once you are vaccinated, you are not the likely host of our candidate that will generate variants.
Dr. White, Venetia wants to know, is there a widespread risk of those vaccinated developing antibody-dependent enhancement, ADE?
That's an interesting question. I don't believe that there is a great risk in particular for these vaccines. We know antibody-dependent enhancement, that's a condition wherein antibodies that you produce initially actually make it easier for you to get the disease in the future. Dengue, for example, is one condition that does that. If you get one strain of Dengue, it is believed that you can, we've observed that you can generate antibodies that makes it easier for you to get another strain of Dengue in the future or more severe Dengue. That has not been observed with COVID-19 vaccines.
Right. Will the vaccine result in miscarriages in women, Dr. Ennis?
Has been, there has been no data at this time that supports that. We know that the clinical trials were not conducted in pregnant women. However, there were several persons in the trials of all the vaccines that were pregnant and they delivered healthy babies. So there is no evidence at this time that disposes persons to abortion. But we should know that COVID-19 can predispose you to preterm babies and certainly to abortions in some cases or miscarriages.
Professor Davidson, the vaccine has a chip to track and monitor you, true or false?
Well, I haven't heard of such a chip being able to monitor you. If, well, if, if, if it's produced or if it is, if it is in, 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 at research stage, it is possible. I mean, from a technological standpoint, it is possible, but I do not know that such a chip has been cleared for use in, at this particular stage. I don't have no idea that such a chip exists.
Dr. White, the vaccine is made from aborted baby cells. True or false?
There is no evidence of any direct use of aborted fetus in the manufacture of these vaccines.
Yeah. Dr. Ennis, the urgent push for mass vaccination is usually a population control method?
So vaccines have nothing in them that reduces one's ability to reproduce. And therefore, there is no truth that is any push or that vaccines will allow persons to not be able to carry out their right to have children. It will not impact fertility anyway.
Prof, the vaccine only covers this strain and will prevent the body from effectively combating the others. Professor Davidson?
Fact of the matter is, is that when you do the studies to see exactly the scope of impact or efficacy of a particular vaccine, it's usually done with a particular strain. And so therefore, theoretically, it does not cover other strains. However, in practice, in practice, we may see some strains or even, and variants being covered in some way. It may not have maybe a 90% coverage for which the vaccine was, was prepared to target the particular strain, but it may have 50, 40, 60% coverage. The fact is that there are a lot of things that we don't know about how a vaccine sort of works in terms of how it covers and reacts to a particular new variant. And some, I think you're going to have some surprises when you actually look at the long-term effects of vaccines and the strains that they cover.
All right. So we've got a minute and a half to go. I'll give you each a chance just to give a final wrap-up in 20 seconds each. Can I begin with you, Dr. Johan White? Your final thoughts to the people who are watching this program on whether or not they should be taking any of the vaccines now available?
Yes, get vaccinated. The side effects that persons are concerned about from vaccines, know that the side effects or adverse effects of COVID-19, the disease is far higher and the risk is greater. Protect yourselves, protect your loved ones, protect your family.
Professor Davidson, 20 seconds to you. Winston Davidson?
First of all, Jamaica has had an excellent experience with vaccines. It has eradicated quite a number of diseases that used to kill people. We don't have a TB sanatorium where a person used to suffer from TB because every child at birth is given a, 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 a mandatory vaccination against tuberculosis. All the diseases, polyomylitis and the other communicable diseases have been eradicated and we have a 95% coverage of these, of these diseases. COVID should be history in Jamaica if we continue that trend. Let us all become vaccinated.
Dr. Melody Ennis, final word to you.
Vaccines are safe, they are effective, they are available in Jamaica. The government, the Ministry of Health and Wellness is working assiduously to make them accessible. Please, I beg all persons, if you can, make the decision, get vaccinated. Protect those among us who really cannot be vaccinated. In the interim, while you wait to be vaccinated, please maintain those protocols. You've got to be wearing the masks properly, covering the nose and mouth. You must unsanitize, physical distance. Please come out, let, get, let us all get Jamaica vaccinated and get back what we consider normal.
Thank you so much, Dr. Melody Ennis, Director of Family Health Services in the Ministry of Health. Thank you, Professor of Public Health and Public Health and Health Technology, Professor Winston Davidson. Thank you as well, Immunologist and Vaccine Researcher, Dr. Johan White. Thank you so much, all of you across Jamaica and outside of Jamaica who sent you many questions. We put every single one of them that we could in the time to the panelists that we have and we do hope that you are satisfied with the answers you've received. We thank you so much for your company. Thank you to my production team for this RGR Gleaner Group Virtual Town Hall meeting and we look forward to having you all again. Please be safe, take good care. I'm Emily Shields. Good evening.